For being here. Okay, folks, if I could just start with an opening statement. We're at the end of the road here on our budget. And I'd just like to say it took a lot of time and effort for us to get here. And with budgets, not everybody's going to always be in an agreement. We realize that. And we had some barriers along the way with recounts and vacancies and everything. But I think it's now time that hopefully we can start pulling this together. And let me just say that hopefully next year, that we can actually have a meeting sometime within the near future and discuss better ways that we may be able to go through this process that would be more user-friendly, not only to us, but visible to the public, and just improve the way things are. But that being said, this is a very important decision time for all of us. We do have an intact team here right now, and it took a little bit to get going. And I really do appreciate everyone for their participation. And the nature of government is sometimes we agree to disagree, but as long as we can do it civilly and focused. But the challenges are ahead for us. We have a $2.2 billion budget, but we have a $370 billion stormwater bill. School modernization and replacement is on the table and everything. So the challenges we have today, we're going to have challenges going forward. And my hope is that we can just go forward in a most congenial way and do some really good things going forward. So at this point, I'd like to open up just comments and things about what we have going forward and what we're going to be talking about today. Anybody, please.
Excellent.
I will.
Okay.
Don't want to be, but I was hoping somebody else would. I put my comments in writing, just so it would all be here. In case you all aren't paying attention today, you can read it tonight. But anyway, I just wanted to make certain that it was clear what I've been saying. And if it's all right, I'll read it so those who are watching remember my thoughts. Your mayor and members of city council, I recognize the importance of having the budget of the city adopted by a vote.
Barbara, why don't you pull that microphone? Because I'm having trouble here.
Okay. And I will sit up closer. I recognize the importance of having the budget of the city adopted by a vote of a majority of city council members, and so therefore I will cast an affirmative vote. I do, however, as I have expressed several times in our statements, have some serious questions and concerns. I think it's necessary for me to use this method in writing of communication so that there's a clear understanding of my positions. I hope that even though we're moving ahead with the budget adoption, these issues and others can still be discussed and perhaps further addressed. One of my very serious concerns is the wind tide flooding in the southern watershed and the fact that it needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. This budget contains very little money for expenditure in the southern watershed. I recognize the need to do further exploration of possible solutions in order to make the wisest investments, but I do want to see the verbiage that will describe the study effort that we expect. Also, I believe that the scope of the study would be better developed through the use of focus groups rather than just a committee, since focus groups would allow us to invite broader and more diverse participation, and these need to get underway immediately. Secondly, I have repeatedly called for more funding for the purchase of open space parcels to serve as a part of our natural infrastructure for flood prevention. We are no longer making purchases with the meal tax levy that we instituted for that purpose, and as described in an answer to a budget question, are using the excess money from that source, quote, "to construct new features within and maintain our parks." I do not agree with that action. However, if that is the intent of city council, I believe that we need to establish that reallocation with a vote of council, and I will bring that action forward if that's your intent, so the tax will accurately reflect its use. I also want to reiterate my request to conduct audits within this coming year of the Sandbridge SSD and TIF. There continue to be questions about how those monies are allocated, and I believe that an audit is necessary to assure taxpayers that the intent is being followed. An audit also can serve as a mechanism for our determining if there needs to be any adjustment in either of those funds to assure that we're addressing the need in the most efficient fashion. Finally, I was confused by the proposal to move the oversight of the four historical houses and museums owned and operated by the city to the cultural operations division. Apparently, this move is requiring that a separate department be created to achieve this. I'm not at all certain that a one-person, one-duty department is the best way to accomplish this mission. I'm also dismayed that the DeWitt Cottage and the Life Saving Museum are losing funding for their operations. I've always been concerned that those historic properties that must rely on volunteers and volunteer fundraising are put at an unfair disadvantage, which certainly does not help in our goal to preserve our city's historic fabric. But I stand ready and eager to work on the many issues facing our city in the coming year and hope that we can make real progress in addressing the needs of our citizens. Thank you for being here.
I appreciate that. Mr. Wood.
So if I can address one of the items on there as liaison to the audit committee. When we hired the auditor, the way the structure was set up is that by a vote of six people on council, we can have the auditor audit anything. So I think if you want to bring back an ordinance or, I guess, resolution at the next meeting, we can vote on it, and we could go ahead and get that done, because I think that's something that's quick to do, and I think that would reassure a lot of people. So I think we can do that now.
Okay.
Yeah. John.
One, and I'm not making an amendment at this time. I don't know how we go about it. But since we don't have the benefit of the grand jury and then the prosecution and all the discovery that comes from that investigation, anybody who I think is in that chain, and we yet know what their involvement or what the collateral damage of that is, I think we should be careful that we shouldn't be increasing the compensation of anyone who's in that chain until we have the benefit of having the knowledge of what comes out of that, so we don't find ourselves publicly embarrassed by having given a raise and then find out from that investigation that something amiss was about. I mean, it's a caution. I'm just giving you that that's something you have to be thinking about.
Economic development.
Yes. It's not just the department. It's also a bigger scope than just that. And so I think we just need to be... I know the city manager has done some house clearing, but it's like in the Navy. It isn't just people clear. All those people have management and oversight, and I think we need to understand the full implication of what happened, and we won't know that for some time down. But I know often we deal with that. That's just something you need to be cognizant of, because it can be... Do one thing, knowing this is still out there, and it can be embarrassing for the city and for us. So that's one thing, just to mention that as an aside. First of all, I want to thank everyone who shared... We shared the same thoughts about how to fund full-day kindergarten. I think that was... We took the right approach on that. And I think we took the right approach on finding revenues without raising the personal property tax for public safety compensation, something that we've been working on. Unfortunately, we weren't as ambitious and as good stewardship on saying that we had to raise real estate tax and the daily EU fee for stormwater, because it really wasn't... We were doing it, but it really wasn't necessary. And I only hope that we don't experience a Houston, which they just had, or these floodings out west, or a big rain, and we're still seeing flooding in neighborhoods from that last rain we just had. But I don't think people are going to care how nice our city hall is or how wonderful a music hall is if their houses are wet. And that's something that we have all collectively who vote for this thing is accepting that risk and telling those people that their homes... Taking risks with their homes rather than taking risks in other areas of the budget. I think we're making personally the wrong choice. Unfortunately, the way the budget is structured, and I understand it, is it's designed to punish people who won't go along with everything, because they can run those nice negative ads that are half-truths, not saying, "Oh, I voted against tax increases." Oh, no, you voted against public safety. You voted against public education. I understand how that works, but I think people of integrity don't let themselves be influenced by the bad behavior and unethical behavior of others. So I will not be supporting the CIP, the PIP, or the operating budget, because I can't severally take out the tax increases that are not necessary. And I'll be talking about the alternatives that we offer. And let's pray to God that people's homes aren't flooded, because I'm not going to have to answer to why our priorities are what they are and why their homes flooded, because we chose other priorities. And I think that's... Those are the fundamental choices that we have made with the reconciliation budget. And people just... I'm not comfortable with that risk, but I appreciate that other people are. That's a difference of opinion. But you asked us to kind of share where we're at, and I want the public to know that there's lots in the operating budget I like. Most of the tax increases are to fund the CIP, but the tax increase ordinances are in the operating budget. So it puts you in an impossible situation, where I always tell integrity comes first, and I think those are unnecessary. And I think we have forgotten just how bad families are hurting. Our turnoffs for water for delinquent accounts is up 400 a month over last year, people having their water turned off because they can't pay their bill. That's a good sign that there's something wrong in the environment. And poverty is up 2% in the community. There's a lot of stuff going on. Real income, average private sector wage is down $10 a week from 2009, even with wage increases in terms of purchasing power. And a lot of our residents are in that category. You heard the nice elegant woman that came and spoke. She said poverty, I am one of those. I think that's what she said. And she eloquently, I think, spoke to her struggle and that she relied upon her children so that she could live. And I just think we have to be mindful if we don't take a... We have to really look hard and have a better understanding, because no one sits at that podium during our budget presentation and speaks for the economically distressed and disadvantaged. No one speaks for them at that podium. They all come and tell us how much more money they need, how much more requirements they need, and I doubt that... And I'm sure they're all valid, but they're not so valid as to impose hardship on our citizens.
No, thank you very much, John. Anybody else?
I'm looking for it. I meant to mark it, and I couldn't. I didn't, I don't think. But, oh, here I did. I think it's really important that everyone is aware of, and those who are qualified take advantage of our exemption or freeze programs for the elderly and disabled people. And the fact that I think we now have in place this automatic adjustment with every budget, I think, that adjusts these amounts. And it's important that people know that if someone is 65 or older or disabled and has an income of $43,141 or less, then they can get a total 100% tax exemption from their real estate tax. And this graduates up to $56,529 income to get 20%. And I hope... And then, of course, you also are allowed $350,000 of financial worth, not including your principal dwelling. And it's really important that people who are qualified, I think, take advantage of this and not feel that they shouldn't. And then, of course, for the freeze program now, the income level is up to $73,759. And when we hear of people who are on fixed incomes and feel that they're having to make choices about what they can or cannot purchase, it's really important, since we have this program, and I think we're still probably at the most lenient within the region. And it's not a mandatory program. I think it speaks highly of our concern for these people that we have this program and that all of our citizens are happy with this or willing to do this, because, of course, these folks, other people have to pick up the difference. So it's important that people know about this and take advantage of it. And I believe there's usually a little card that goes out with the real estate bill to tell people to do this. But telling people, "Go down and take advantage of it. It's not something that you should feel... That you shouldn't take advantage of." I think it's something we want people to take advantage of.
Yeah. John.
That is true, but if you look up the statistics, the majority of the elderly are living exclusively off social security, and the majority of the elderly are in rental properties, not in homeownership properties. And so those rents gets passed off as things. As a matter of fact, the marketplace is changing. More people want to rent than buy, and for lots of reasons. The exit strategy, greater job mobility, lots of things are flavoring. So there is a... People that do take advantage of this, and they should. But there is a demonstrative part of the elderly population today. If anybody who's in rental properties, the renting people do not get a break, and so they pass those costs on. And that's when the lady who spoke, remember she said how she rented and that she couldn't stay in her place absent her... I think her daughter was in the Navy, and I think her son. And I think that you have two sets of elderly people. People who are taking care of their grandchildren, which is more common than it should be. And then you have other... Their children who are taking care of their parents, which is a good thing, because social security has certainly not maintained their purchasing power, their Medicare insurance premiums. They are among the poorest people or a larger... Are there some well-funded elderly? Absolutely, that's true. And they... Baby boomers have about 70% of all the discretionary income in the economy. So there's... So that you have two ends are stressed. And I'm just saying that if we do these fees and these fixed costs, they're independent of earnings, and they reflect nothing about the ability to pay, and there's no relationship to the cause that they contribute to the thing we're trying to fix. And those costs are disproportionately, and they're going to reflect in the rents, and they're going to reflect in all these goods and services. And the people who can least afford it are disproportionately going to feel a bigger effect. And that's... I'm just... We've got to think, maybe we need something to the general assembly, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Different revenue ways to look. But these wealth taxes, and what I call them, what they are, are just situational taxes that don't have any reflection ability to pay, you know, just drive a bigger social services department. Because what really lifts people up is jobs.
Right.
And if you look since 1986, and I was talking with Nancy Parker the other evening. I said in 19... Well, Barbara was there. In 1986, we were at Kingston Elementary School on the stage.
In 1986, I was there, not the other evening when you were talking to Nancy.
No, no.
Okay, well, let's just get this straight.
1986, we were at the stage at Kingston Elementary.
I don't remember that. I'm sorry.
Lynnwood Branch, and he was sitting on the far left. And he said, "We don't need higher tax rates. We need more revenue at current tax rates, and we need to get to 70-30," which is 70% residential and 30% commercial for revenues. That's 1986. Roll forward. We're no closer to that number than we were in 1986, no closer. And so all the strategies that we have taken have not delivered an outcome that we had hoped. So something tells me, you know, we need a new strategy. That's the first conclusion. And the private sector jobs that are in our community have not materially... In any real time, the average private wage has not materially increased. In fact, it's down slightly. And so we haven't uplifted through the jobs that we supposedly are creating. We are not changing fundamentally the profile of our private sector employment, also suggesting we need to think about our strategy, because it's not delivering the pay jobs that allow people to live here without having to have public support. And you've got to give those people support when they need it. But we shouldn't be putting money and subsidizing industries that are not delivering wages that allow people to not have to be dependent upon social services, because those jobs will be created anyway, and there's no shortage of those. So this budget doesn't really have... It's just a continuation of our past strategy. And when you look at the results, it hasn't allowed us to avoid tax increases. It hasn't really lifted average wages. You know, our average medium... Our average income now is lower than Chesapeake. Our median income's lower than Chesapeake. Their housing prices are higher. Their schools are performing just as well, and they didn't raise taxes. And their garbage fees and their real estate tax rate. Now, do they have rec centers and all these other things? No, but we passed a referendum to do those things. But they're also not... And they don't have tourism to bring in revenue. So I think we need to do some... As we look forward, there needs to be a lot more analytics applied to us to understand our performance factors and what our trend lines are. We know we lost working adults. That's a known factor. And now because of the change in federal tax laws, you're seeing more people who are retired saying, "You know, this salt thing has an effect on my choices." So, you know, and then let's say those people leave, then next thing you know, you're not as wealthy on an income basis as you were 10 or 15 years ago on a real-time basis. Those are things we need to understand, because we have big bills to pay. And if we're investing on things that aren't making a contribution of lifting incomes, and we have to keep raising taxes, then we need a new strategy. And I hope that is part of our discussion, because we can't keep losing $500,000 to bankrupt Bitcoin places and $250,000 to build fountains and people's fountains for their business. And that's $750,000. If you take the average real estate taxes, maybe $3,000. I think it's close. That's a lot of homes that we didn't... That money that went to... Didn't turn out well. And we've got to understand that and how we can't afford to keep making those mistakes.
And if I could just say, John, I agree with you wholeheartedly. And, you know, because our health and human services costs are rising exponentially. We're having more and more people go on Medicaid, and elderly were agreeing city in a lot of ways. But there is... And, you know, I agree 150% that the 70-30 ratio's got to change and dramatically. And at least some good news that we're starting to see some movement with high tech. I just did a groundbreaking on a high-tech industry point one at corporate landing. And there seems, at least now with the broadband coming in, there might be some new opportunities out of, you know, coming forward that we can exploit. But, you know, but I think the thing about we have to bring in new business that's not displacement business, that it brings in new revenues. And I tell you, to the folks that graduated from Virginia Tech, William &amp; Mary, UVA, that are living in Northern Virginia, let's give them a better option, you know, to come home and with those type of jobs that we can do. And I think, you know, that's going to be kind of a focus, I think, what we're doing. We have a new initiative now. A little bit, it's a subtle change where economic development is working more closely with planning, because there's no sense bringing in a business and having them wait a couple of years to get a plan approved. So... But the thing is, if we can change our culture to be business-warming and welcoming, and then we'll help, you know, navigate through the process. But the other thing is businesses expansion, too. And I think that's an opportunity that we have to do. But I do agree with you, John. Jess, and then Barbara.
I wanted to comment on the tax relief program, because I think everybody here agrees with the function of that relief. But 18 to 35, that population in Virginia Beach makes up approximately a quarter of our city. And if you roll into all of the other children that are not 18 yet, it's nearly half. And so we have a program that's providing relief, needed relief, for people who are elderly and disabled. And in the meantime, when we pass tax increases, when we raise fees, presumably the water bill, you're impacting that group of people that's now carrying the burden for everybody else. And there is no relief program for people my age. There's no relief program for the 19-year-old that gets their first apartment. There's no relief program for the 35-year-old professional that is making $33,000 a year as a single individual in their household. That's where we are in Virginia Beach. And that's why people under 35 don't want to live here. It's too hard. And, you know, I'll talk about it tonight a little more, but $108, that's a water bill. That's an entire month water bill. And I know people with what would be... The average person would consider to be a good job, waiting for that yellow notice on their door saying, "Your water's being turned off in 48 hours unless you pay us." And that's what they use to pay their bill. And it gives me such heartache to think about where we're going to be when almost everybody starts rolling in and saying, "I have the ability to qualify for these relief programs," but then we don't have the younger groups of people to support it. We need that relief program, but if we can't pay for it, because nobody wants to live here, because they can't afford to live here, I don't know what we're going to do. And I feel like every time we have a retreat, every time we talk about a new initiative, every time we talk about what new business or new thing we're going to bring into Virginia Beach, we always talk about how it's going to bring in these young people. They're going to go to college and come back, and they're going to bring their ideas here. But they're not going to. They're not doing it, because it's not affordable to live here. And almost everybody I know in my age group is moving to Chesapeake or Norfolk, because what they can't get in Virginia Beach, they can get in those two cities. And I think that we have to seriously look at what kind of a burden we're putting on. And I know we've talked about trying to find a better way than the fees, and that's... I hope... I'm so hopeful that that's what we're going to be talking about next cycle. But, you know, it's really hard to say, "Hey, we're going to fix these things. We're going to provide you these services," but then we're just taking it from somebody else. And, you know, we talk a lot about the elderly who are really struggling, but there are an awful lot of young families that cannot make it here. And they have to make hard decisions, like hoping that their in-laws or their parents can watch their children, because $375 a week is what daycare costs for two kids. You know, they're saying, "I'm going to go back and live with my parents, and while that's uncomfortable, I have no ability to save." We've got people who have families and debt that they have to support, but they don't have $5,000 in their savings account. And I don't think that we realize, or maybe we do, and I don't know. I just... It's very difficult now, and I don't think we should be placing extra on people.
I'm not adverse at all to having strategy discussions, not only during budget cycle, but early on. And I think we can actually start some of these discussions, you know, PDQ, you know, like right now going forward. But once again, I think as we sit around and deliberate. And, you know, and I was quite frankly pleased, at least during the budget discussions, there was a lot of deliberate, you know, discussions at this table. But now, if we can, you know, actually start maybe focus in a couple of our mini retreats or council discussions on focus on these... But, you know, strategies are that until they're executable and put into action. And so the hope, you know, going forward that, you know, we can come up with, you know, some of that. You know, I think there's some positive changes going on in economic development right now with some personnel changes and, you know, kind of a fresh way of looking at things. But once again, it's got to bear fruit. But once again, you know, I really take to heart a lot of the comments, you know, being said here. Barbara, did you have something?
Yeah, I really jotted down some things, but a lot of these things that have been said, so this sounds a bit disjointed. Going back to the elderly program, I don't mean to call it relief, because it's... Folks need to not think of it in that fashion, but when people are on a fixed income after they have worked hard all their lives and supported all of the other folks along the way, we don't want people to be taxed out of their homes, and because many people do age in place. And this whole concept of aging in place is one that is very important in this time, because other methods of finding that lifestyle can be extremely expensive and not really affordable for folks. So we don't want to get to the place where people have spent their entire life paying off their mortgage, and now they have their home paid for, but we don't want them to get taxed out of it. And so it's very important that we are mindful of that, as we are mindful of the kinds of issues with all of the different demographics. But that's extremely important for folks. And when we're talking about what income... And I don't like this idea of that we're subsidizing certain things or people. I think we incentivize a lot, and there's a difference between incentivizing and just subsidizing. But at one era, we were... Had as one of our goals that we were going to particularly try to attract industries that paid at least $30,000 a year. Well, you know, that may not sound like much now, but whatever it was, it was substantial. But then I remember one morning we were at a gathering of business people, and they were kind of offended that we weren't valuing the jobs that they offered, because they were less than $30,000. And we came to realize that, you know, there are a lot of folks who... I mean, at that time, you know, the jobs were very important at that level and even below. And so we... I think we don't want to minimize the value of every job. It may not be the highest-paying job, but it's very important to people who need a part-time job or who need a job of any description, a second job and so forth. So I really hate for us to think that we are only looking for the highest-paying jobs or certain things. And yes, we've had this goal of getting to 70-30 rather than 80-20 or whatever for a lot of years. And by the way, Lynnwood Branch was not on the council in 1986. And by the way, Linwood Branch was not on the council in 1986, I do remember that much.
He was on the stage at that time.
Oh, I don't know why he was on the stage in 1986, but anyway, I didn't even know him then. Times have changed over the last 30 years, and so, these goals that we have and so forth, you know, have to adjust to the times. So what we did 30 years ago won't be exactly what we do now. But one of the things I know that kids can get in Virginia Beach that they don't get in other cities, is this top-notch educational system that we've got, and the ability to, to, to go to a school that's accredited. And, and I think our education system is something that offers to our people the best, and I'm so glad that we were able to work out this all-day kindergarten within the budget. I, I think that it will be something that, that works. But this, as well as what we're doing with the public safety salaries, this year, we get to see if we have resolved these things within this budget. And we find that if we haven't, then we can make those adjustments next year. But I think it's really good that we're able to, to address those concerns that we heard so much about. And one other thing that I will mention, I think some of you, probably all of you, if you looked at it, I've got some pictures today about some of the flooding over the weekend in the southern part of the city. That wasn't rain, that was, that's wind tide, that's the flooding from the Currituck Sound. There's a big difference. So every time you look at one of those pictures, it's important to know whether that water came from the sky, or if it came from the bay. Now, the, the wind has shifted, Amanda can tell us whether it's out or not yet. But there, there's differences. And that kind of water, digging ditches, is, is not going to help. It, it's really, I think this is, this is the important thing that we have to do right now, is to help everybody understand that we're do, dealing with different kinds of flooding. And, and that's a big challenge that we've got going forward. But I just want to make sure you all know, we were very lucky down south, that we didn't get the three inches that some places I hear did. We got moderate amounts and, and so forth. But we did get a lot of flooding, but it's because the wind was from the south, until this front finally gets through and it shifted north.
Okay, Jim.
Just, just to follow up on that, the wind tide, I was, had a construction supply place today, and one of the guys who li, apparently lives in Currituck County, told me how everything was flooded in, in his area. He said they got very little rain, but the wind tide pushed everything up. And he said, he goes, when, he said, "When the wind's coming from the south," he said, "My boat's floating in my front yard." And he said, "When it's blowing from the north," he said, "I have no water at all behind my house." So it was, it was kind of interesting. So that, that's the same thing. Kind of goes back to what you were saying about, you know, potentially partnering with North Carolina on this cut-through, overwash, whatever, whatever we want to call it, that, that study. You know, that, that Currituck may not have the, the financial ability to, to do a meaningful cost participation, but I think it certainly helps to have, have them as, as partners to the extent if we have to go to the federal government or, or others like that. And I, I just thought that was interesting, because that just came up ju, just a few minutes before I came down here, so.
But we're going to have to work with all the folks from the south, because we don't want to do anything to hurt them, and they don't want to hurt us. Besides, we all got to get permits, and so, we've got to work together. But you're right, those creeks down there, one day it's overflowing, the next day you see the bottom of it. I mean, the, the dirt on the bottom. And it, it goes and comes very quickly. And it's very hard for people to, to grasp that. And, and, and the solutions are different. And so, looking for the, for possible solutions is going to be a challenge.
Yeah.
Digging the ditches would be an easy thing to do, if we're just talking about the stormwater. But the wind tide is an entirely different issue.
John.
This is a topic I brought before, and it can be amended later, but we do need to come back and revisit the topic that I thought we all had agreed on at the retreat, was a bond referendum for stormwater. You know, we, these are very unique capital market times. You've got the, the German bank is running 1.5% negative interest rates, you've got the Japanese bank running negative interest rates, you've got the 10-year treasury notes at about 2.4. There is a window in all this economic issues, and this probably will drop some more, that would be, would be well-posed to be able to take advantage of historically low 10-year bond rates, that it might even fall more. So it, it makes more sense, you don't have to, to have a more aggressive program borrowed at 50 to 25% basis points, less than what the Development Authority can issue, that just because it's general obligation bonds, and be more aggressive on a flooding program, and do it in a more compressed timeframe, and a lower total lifecycle financing cost than what you look at the, when you talk to the people out there forecasting future rate structures, that, that this is not going to last forever. And people that take advantage of that can, can gain an advantage. So I think one of our strategy sessions early on has to be thinking about that bond referendum talks. I think the public is more apt and supportive of this than we might think, but I just think we have to just show them what the, the whole business case is, and what it means to do something in 10 years versus 15, and, and what the favorable capital markets are. Because this is, you know, big biz, this is a time to be, if you can, in service to debt, and have the support. You know, these are historic lows to be borrowing money, and from a public sector perspective, because of, of the returns and the tax laws to make it more favorable. So I think we, we would be, I think, well-versed to have some experts in that field, not just rely upon my, just, you know, novice researching and talking with folks, but just, so we had to understand just what that future capital market and what that is like, and understand that, uh, there's a, there's a strategy here to get more done at less cost than if you spread it out. And I think that's something that we need to really be looking at, in terms of our business strategy, attractiveness, what it means to people's flood insurance, what it means to people trying to buy a house where it does flood. I think there's all, I think we just haven't done a, haven't had the opportunity, put it that way, to spend the time and the analytical effort to understand how all that comes together and, and create a competitive advantage out of it. That's what I'm really after. And I think that, uh, that may cause us to revisit our bond policy structure, we need to talk with, but if it's for the right reason, maybe that works. I just think we haven't invested enough time in understanding a better capital way. And that would allow us also to do a bigger acquisition, just to get back to my point, a lot of little projects, start and finish, you pay a lot for overhead for contractors. You can reduce your cost, the bigger your project is, you have more, less mobilization, demobilization. I think we really need to think about that, to get a bigger value for the buck spent.
Okay. Good. John, I think, you know, those type of discussions should be part and parcel to a lot of discussions under, you know, developing that overarching strategy. Rosemary.
I was going to say, if we're going to do a bond, it has to be really well-planned out. The projects, the cost of the project, where they're going to be, how much, you know, everything's got to be spelled out. We don't have that.
But I think between now and November 20, we could do that, that's my point.
I mean, you just have to have all of that. You just can't say, "We, we need this amount of money," and it's got to be all.
I said, but my point is, we have the time to do that.
But I'm saying it has to be well-planned out.
Oh, I agree. And I, that's why I mentioned it.
Good. Okay, at this point, anybody else? Okay, thank you for the conversation, and I guess we'll, you know, just adjourn until we go into formal session.
Sit here and eat all the candy.